Well, welcome. Tonight, one to cross off my bucket list. We're getting close to 500 shows that we've done. And this is one that I always wanted to do because we're so fortunate having town meeting members who really have shepherded Milford and kept us on the right path. Yet, when you ask somebody, "What's a town meeting?", nobody knows. So who better than the person who's been running the town meeting for, if I say how many years, I'll get in trouble. But let's start with an introduction.
Well, I've been town moderator for approximately 43 years. Prior to being the town moderator, before my serving as town moderator, Tony Alagretza, who was a selectman previously, worked over in Draper Corporation. And before that, Roy Lovell, who was the editor of Milford Daily News years ago. And before that was John Curran, Paul Curran's dad, who ran it for many years. I think I've surpassed him in service in probably, I mean, 43 or 44 years now.
I was gonna say, there can't be too many people that did 40-plus years.
Right. But there are other moderators throughout the state that have done 50-plus years.
Really?
Oh, yes, right. The Mass Moderators Association, the honor of those that have served for more than 50 years. So, and prior to that, I was a selectman for six years. And prior to that, I taught school for, at Milford High School, for four years. And that's probably what got me interested in government. Well, even before that, I went to UMass and there was a government course that everybody took because it was an easy grade. And it really got my interest in town government. And when I was teaching, I taught a problems democracy course, a civics course. And I always encouraged the students to get involved, all right? Get involved. In fact, that's what made me, you know, run for selectman. At one time, I was the youngest selectman in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And you had to be 21 in order to vote back then. So, I think I was about 25 years old at that time. And then Dick Moore ran for selectman in Hope Dale, and he beat me by five months, or he became the youngest selectman. So, but, you know, so it's been a very enjoyable participating in town government. And as I told you before, probably 50 years ago, in January, I was asked to run for selectman. Back then, we used to run a selectman as a team of three, three selectmen who were elected every year for one-year term. And I ran with Tom Cullen, John Maher, and myself. And we ran against Lou Bertinazzi, Jim Donlin, and Lou Gariere. And at that time, it was interesting, also, the voter turnout, we had about 9,000 registered voters, and we'd have 70% turnout. Now, I don't know that was caused by the fact that you had six families with all their relatives getting out to vote, but, I mean, turnouts were all 70% and sad, as we talked about before.
That would make you feel good, because when, a couple of years ago, when we hit 12%...
Well, I know, that's, in fact, there's a committee formed that's gonna be meeting to try to get more people to vote. And I think what we've got to do is we've got to get younger people involved, whether it's going back to the schools, offering courses there, or guest speakers, or telling them about town meeting, how they can participate. I always tell people when they run for town meeting, your vote is just as important as a member of the Board of Selectmen, when you think about it. You don't have to get up there, you don't have to speak for or against it. You have a vote. And whether it's, you know, the people that are involved with a zoning issue, and it's not in my neighborhood or whatever. Or we had the, you know, the casino issue, which might have got the town meeting floor if it wasn't for the, you know, overwhelming vote against it. But it's pure democracy. I mean, that's what it is, you know, town meeting.
But when you think about it, even, you know, we look at the selectmen. They get one out of 200...
240-plus.
40-plus votes. The FinCom, and I've always joked about the most influential powerless people in the room. Because if you look at the entire FinCom, they get one vote. Fifteen people get one vote. You know, the fact that people see us rising to vote, it's because we ran as town meeting members.
Right.
It's not because we're on the FinCom.
Right.
So, like you say, you could be one of the 240-plus people, and that night, you have as much sway as any selectman, any at-large member, everybody.
Right, right.
Let's start with, what is a town meeting and why?
Well, when you talk to people sometimes, "I'm going to a town meeting." Now, that might be going to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, or zoning board, or maybe I'll go to the Finance Committee. And I, as I said before, be thankful that we have a, we have a TV station now that you can watch the minutes of the meeting. You'd be surprised, especially with this last town meeting, how many people called me, and then they reviewed minutes of your meetings, all right? And minutes of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, we're able to see them. And it wasn't like, what happened? I wasn't there. You can see, you know, you can be there.
Well, the original time they came to the FinCom, the TV crew, Andy came and he said, "I'd like to film the FinCom meetings." I was chairman, and I said, "No. It's bad enough we go two hours. If you film them, I'm scared to death it's gonna be three and a half, because people will..."
Right, wanna get their say, yep.
They wanted their time in front of the camera. And it was funny, because he said, "Was there anybody I can appeal to?" I said, "Yeah, you can appeal to the head of the Cable Committee, but I'm pretty sure he's gonna say no." And they said, "Why?" I said, "That's me." But, you know, in retrospect, at first, it was annoying. But now, it's kind of settled out, and it's kind of nice that people can watch what's happening.
Yes, right. And, you know, with any other board. Now, we have, what, the zoning board, the planning board. And initially, it was, as I was mentioning, going back many years, the question was, the board, when I was served on the Board of Selectmen, whether the radio station could broadcast it. I mean, that was...
Oh, the Ed Thompson...
Ed Thompson. Ed Thompson was the one that pushed for that. And, you know, so he sat there and he recorded the meeting. And, you know, it's like Catherine Coyne's meeting over the...
You could mother coin, Quirrell.
Table to us and telling us...
She's mothering over everything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And can we really have it that you've got Ms. Coyne, mothering over, you know, mother coin over the meeting?
Right, right.
Telling somebody, "Be careful of this." Well, what happens when that shows up on the radio?
Right, right. So, I mean, but Ed was, you know, he did the work, and he got us to agree to that. Then, then we, with the TV station, it was a question of broadcasting that. And our concern was, obviously, someone getting up there and just wanting to see themselves on TV, and, you know, how good they would look.
But let's start. Why, what is town meeting? I mean, people don't understand that the power, the influence, it's all with 240-some people.
Right. And it's a shame that we have vacancies. We have a representative town meeting. The options are to have an open town meeting, where any registered voter can attend the meeting and have a vote. And in a, as part of the Mass Moderators Association, we have a lot of emails going back and forth as far as how they control them. And sometimes, when we have a big issue like a school, you've got thousands of people. Where are you gonna put them? So, they have them, in summertime, they might have them in a field, they might have the auditorium of the high school, plus the gymnasium, and they'd have two or three moderators, assistant moderators, trying to control that. So, back in 1935, Milford decided to have a representative town meeting. And so, we chose the number of representatives, and each precinct is represented. And as I say before, every meeting, any registered voter has the opportunity to speak before the town meeting. You cannot present a motion, but you can speak and say whether you're for or against it. And I always found, and I, in fact, I was just having a little coffee with Joe Arcudi, our former town clerk, and we're talking about this. The most effective people, I think, when I, all the town meetings that I've observed and presided over, are those people that get up, maybe for the first time, they're prepared. There's nothing wrong with writing out what you're gonna say, put it on the podium, and, you know, express your point on that. And I find that oftentimes, that's the, that's the vote, they sway the vote that way. Some people get up there continually, they're well-prepared, in some cases, but no one's paying attention.
And we'll talk to them, because after half an hour...
Yes.
You've lost it.
Yes, right.
But now, open town meeting, I don't know how you keep the continuity. Because one thing that I've always felt really comfortable is, it's pretty easy to predict on real issues, how our town meeting goes. You got 240 people, a few come on and off every year. But when you look at the values, you know, when you talk about, has town meeting ever turned on a resident? I've never seen it.
Right.
You know, because when residents come and say, "Okay, this is not quite right on my lot," or "This, I need help on that," it seems like the town meeting all looks and says, "Well, that could be me."
Right, right. I think it's a, and again, it's, not a lot of people speak at the town meeting. And again, it goes to the preparation. I think, you know, years ago, with our representative town meeting, when I was a selectman, we used to argue the salary of the Police Department and the Fire Department. You can look back and you can see headlines, "Police got an 18% raise," or "15% raise." And, you know, you're sort, the town meeting, as a representative town meeting body, a lot of the police, the fire, the highway, they were members, and their relatives were members of the representative town meeting, so that they had the necessary votes to, you know, so you were...
Take care of your own.
Yeah, that's basically what happened in those situations. And now, I think we've had, with collective bargaining, and it's all, in fact, I was on the first bargaining committee for the Teachers Association. Remember, the MTA says, "Go on with this contract here, present it to the Board of School Committee, and they'll sign it." We went on for months negotiating that, you know, so, it, but getting back to the, it's a representative body. Open town meeting can be chaos, all right? That's why a lot of towns, they're going to what they call electronic voting. They spend $20,000, $30,000 for these remotes or whatever, they can vote, just like the legislature. I hope we don't go to that in Milford.
Candidly, I mean, when I was at Maryland Yacht Club, I learned for the first time what blackballing meant. Because the first vote I ever took, they literally passed a box. And you put your hand in there, and you either took a white cube or a black ball, and you moved it.
Yeah.
I absolutely could not stand that, because I'm like, "Wait a minute. This is a board. If I'm gonna vote against you, I'm gonna do it to your face."
Right, right.
And this, it felt cowardly to hide behind this box.
Right.
And then they pull out the little drawer. Candidly, unless you're gonna spend a fortune, like the House of Representatives or the Senate in the US, Capitol does, where they put, you know, "No free," Korea, "Yay-nay."
Right, yep.
Then, I wouldn't object to it as much.
Okay.
Because then, you know, like, when you call, and we'll go through it, you call for a standing vote for two-thirds. We've gotta stand up.
Right.
And you're not hiding behind anything, because everybody around you sees how you vote.
That used to be a negative years ago. In fact, I was talking to someone who says, "Oh..." I can remember Roy, in fact, she mentioned Paul Curran had given her a letter that, or a pointer in direction of a letter that Roy Lovell had written way back in the early '70s of the representative town meeting, and the problems that we had, that we're not getting people to run for it. It would be the businessmen who would be very concerned that if they stood up and voted against the police or the fire...
Oh, then you'd hold it against their business.
Then, you won't patronize their business. That was always the, you know, the downside of that.
But now, we have...
Now, we have a, as I said, the collective bargaining, it's presented. You have, the Finance Committee is, I mean, the reports, you compare your reports to the reports of, you know, 40 years ago plus. I mean, there's no comparison.
Yeah, but that was Bill Buckley who shamed me into it. Because he came to a FinCom meeting once, and he said, "You know, back when, the FinCom always presented the background and their position on every article.
Right.
Why aren't you guys doing it?" And I was like, "Dang, the man is right. We should be doing that." And then, I had town meeting members come to me and say, "You know, you bring a fire truck, half a million bucks. I have no idea. Is it the right truck? What's the logic?" So, a couple of years ago, we started, well, maybe now, three years ago, but the Capitol Subcommittee posts on the website all the background. Like, for the ladder truck, somebody came to me and said, "You realize there's like 300 pages?" I said, "It's $1.1 million. It better be 300 pages."
Right, right.
So, little by little, doing the report, putting all that data up, so town meeting members, because I always felt bad when the town meeting members, the night before or a week before, got a warrant, no real information. So, if you weren't part of the group that studied it, you didn't stand a prayer.
Yeah.
Now, I don't have any sympathy for somebody who says, "In the last month..." It's only two nights a year, but in the last month, I haven't had time to read about this article.
Right, right. I know. I mean, the opportunity to educate yourself, if you're interested in a particular article, is there.
So, now, we have eight precincts.
Right.
Twenty-odd, twenty-five...
Thirty, thirty.
Roughly 30...
Is it 30? Plus the at-large, yeah.
Plus the at-large. So, it's 30 per precinct. So, there's no way of stacking it. You can't get all the no-free cousins to dominate.
Right. Well, as I said, a lot of encouragement. I'll see the, I'll see the fathers and their children, you know, children, they're adult voters, I mean, but they're, they're voting there.
But you still couldn't stack 240 people.
No, no, absolutely not. No. I mean, I think you're, as I said, but going back to years ago, when, you know, when you'd have the, when their raises were on the table, and they'd get their relatives to, wouldn't have to say anything, there would just be the vote...
But it even happened not too many years ago, when Paul Curran, out of the whole $70 million budget, pulled one salary.
Yeah.
You know, and that really showed you the granularity that town meeting members can go to. He objected to one salary out of 800 people, and he pulled it out, we had to debate it.
Right, right, right. No, it's, it's, you know, as I said, purest form of democracy. You know, it used to be, the town meetings were held, you know, in March. I mean, and you'd have the freezing weather. In fact, I think I told you, when we had that after the vote, I ran for town meeting member when we moved to Milford, and I lost. I lost by 20 votes or so. I was out there handing out a paper, saying, "Who I am, and please vote for me." And I lost in Precinct 3. And then, the next year, I ran for selectman, lost that year, and then the following year, I got the highest vote count. So, it, you know, it can happen. I mean, but you gotta, again, you know, as I said, I want to see more people involved. The, it's gonna be some education to get some of our younger people, you know, to want to participate. You know, when I was, you know, very young, I was up in the balcony, I watched the, when the library was being presented, Angela Roberti and Bob McGuinness, who were down there. I think it lost by two or three votes. But it was, you know, an interesting discussion, and, you know, you have your opportunity to bring your point. And, you know, as I said, I'm happy with, I've been an ad hoc member of this committee studying town meeting procedure. In fact, one of the people under Reno DeLuzio, and I, DeLuzio and I served as on the Board of Selectmen together. So, and he's very dedicated to that, you know, and he's been doing a lot of research, you know.
Do you think people really know how much power town meeting has over their lives?
Oh, they, well, they do. Well, I mean, with the anticipation, I mean, when the issue comes up, like the casino issue. You know, it's amazing how many vacancies were filled by those people who were against the casino, if it ever came to the zoning issue, which it, you know, it didn't, you know. So, I mean, it's a, in other, and even the, you know, the issues like dog control years ago. I mean, oftentimes, you find people, they're familiar with that. They either own a dog, or they're bothered by the neighbor's dog, or whatever. So, they're anxious to get up there, and they can, you know, they can talk about it. Sometimes with, whether it's the sewer, you know, so many millions of dollars for the sewer, or the high school, or new schools. Think of all the new schoo-, I mean, this town in Milford is so well-run. When you look to other towns, it sometimes will go eight and 10 nights to meet on a town meeting warrant, eight or 10 times. I mean, years ago, I presided over one that went 11 sessions. Seriously, 11 sessions back in the, in the '70s and '80s. Oh, yeah. We kept on adjourning and reconsidering, and, oh, yes, that happened.
What could you talk about for 20, at that point, it's 30 hours?
104 articles at one meeting.
Oh, my God.
104, seriously. Yep. No, I just, it's, you know, and it's, you know, the, as I said, I, when we have millions of dollars that we've spent, whether it's the high school, the Stacy School, the Memorial, think of it, Brookside Woodland, and how well-prepared. And again, a lot of people didn't speak on it, because they depended upon the Finance Committee and the people that we had hired.
Well, it's always funny when people say, "Well, nobody ever argues..." Everybody's always in tune at town meeting. I'm laughing, saying, "You haven't seen the 14 meetings for the previous six months, when we hammer out issues over and over and over." So, by the time it gets there, we've all agreed. And, I mean, when nobody's happy, then it's probably a good compromise.
Right, right. That's, that's...
You know, because I know that left to my own devices, we would never spend enough money. Just my nature. I'm the squirrel who wants to keep putting nuts away, just in case. But I value people on the other side, you know, when they scream, "Ah, that guy will only spend money." That's okay. Because if Joe is screaming, "Spend, spend, spend," and Al's screaming, "Save, save, save," as long as they respect each other somewhere in the middle...
Right.
...we end up building a woodland with no taxing, no override.
Yeah, right. I mean, you know, it's, I'm just so pleased to be, you know, part of the community for so many years, that we've, you know, we've had our struggles, I mean, and ups and downs, but, you know, we've, I think things have worked out well.
But you start with, every dollar spent has to go through town meeting. Nobody in this town can authorize a dollar, correct?
Right.
Has to be town meeting.
Right.
Eight precincts, 30 people each, you got 240 opportunities to vote on every dollar spent. And no matter what people say about, you gotta save money on taxes. No, you control spending, you control taxes.
Right.
So, anybody who complains about taxes and doesn't want to stand up and understand it, I got small level of sympathy.
Right.
And then you go, twice a year, we have a town meeting. Why twice a year?
Well, originally, it was just in March. You know, going back many years, we just have our annual town meeting. And then, the special would only be for, if we were considering a new school or some big item.
Big capital.
So, I mean, the trend has been recently, we take care of, we don't know what money we're getting back from the state, and what the financial situation is. So, we've divided and have one in the fall and the one in...
So, the spring has a lot of, if I use housekeeping, I get yelled at. But recurring articles.
Right.
Like, can we collect taxes? Well, yes. How do we collect taxes? You know, what power does the selectman have? So, typically, out of 40, maybe 20-ish?
The standard, you know, authorize the town to borrow money, et cetera, and, you know, the treasurer to sign notes.
But people don't understand that that goes away July 1st, if you don't vote.
Right, right.
The selectmen do not have the authority to set a tax rate. We don't have the authority to collect taxes. We don't have the authority to do anything until the town meeting says, "Yeah, we like it, do it again next year."
Right, right.
So, that's mainly May. And I know that for Capitol, we've, there's no official policy, but we've asked town meeting to say, "We'd like to limit Capitol to emergencies and special occasions." Like, Tom, Chief O'Laughlin came one year and said, "I've got 60 days. I can get a grant to pay for 70% of the lighting." Well, that was special. If I only have to pay for 30%, we're not gonna wait till October.
Right, right.
Or if there's something broken, it's a safety issue. Those kind of capital items, we deal with.
One thing I want to point out, though, and it happened many years ago, when I was involved with the PTO at the high school, my kids were going to, through Milford High School, the band needed new uniforms. And so, you know, parents from music said, "Well, you know, how do we go about it?" I says, "Well, you can always, we put an article in the warrant, and bring it before the Finance Committee, and see what happens." And they did, and unfavorable. I said, "That doesn't mean it's lost. What you do is you go to the meeting, and they paraded some of the kids down, this was at the high school, and, you know, the voters ended up giving them the money for the new uniforms."
And they got the uniforms.
So, I mean, it's not, you know, again, you guys recommend, but that doesn't, that's not the...
We have no power at all.
Right.
That's why I said, the FinCom is influential but powerless.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, 15 out of 15 can say yay or nay, but it's the 240 that count.
Right, right.
So, now, you used a couple of words, "The warrant."
Right.
What is a warrant?
All right. A warrant is notice to the public of what we're going to act upon, all right? And that's the, so that, and again, very seldom, if I had to rule some, you know, some motion under the article out of order, because it's beyond the scope. You know, sometimes we'll have, you know, to appropriate a sum of money, rather than to specify the amount of money. Because if we specified the amount of money, and we said, "We're gonna appropriate $500,000," then all of a sudden, you present a motion that says, you know, "A million dollars." That may be beyond the scope of, you know, so, of the notice to the people. I would've showed up if it was gonna be a million dollars, but I'm happy with $500,000, so I won't go to the meeting. I won't, you know, make the effort to, you know, to attend and voice my opinion.
So, the warrant is a listing of every action item we're asking town meeting to vote on.
Right, right.
What happens if I didn't get it on the warrant? Can I still petition town meeting?
No, no, you can't, all right? Well, as I said, if you want to, you know, it depends upon the, whether it's a special town meeting, whether an annual town meeting, as far as 10 voters can sign a petition, and they can ask the selectmen to include this particular matter on the warrant, okay? So, the selectmen have to honor that. Special town meeting requires, I think it's 200 signatures, you know, to present something. For example, I was just talking, over in Holliston, they were dealing with the issue of the condominiums, their trash being picked up. And there was, you know, I talked to some members of the condo association, that Holliston said, "We're gonna stop at December 31st." So, they've been back and forth, the selectmen were against it or whatever. So, they actually had, in fact, they, different sides, and they finally voted the other night. And to, the motion was something to the effect that, to see if the town will continue the trash pickup, okay? But they didn't put a sum of money into the motion. So, now, the selectmen are not gonna do it. They said, "December 31st, we're gonna..."
We don't have any money to do it.
Well, right. I mean, we're just, you know, fine, the town, it was 140 to 50 votes.
But now, when you say petition the selectmen, we hear the warrant closes on September 1st.
That's why, yep.
What happens on September 2nd? Can I still petition them?
No, no. They set the deadline, you know, and oftentimes, and I was on the Board of Selectmen, we don't have all the articles ready that we're gonna put, you know, because it's time-consuming. So, I think, you know, the selectmen with their, you know, sometimes will, you know, they know what their deadline is, and they've got a general idea of what the article is gonna be, so fine-tuning it. But if a citizen's petition wanted to, you know, whether it be, you know, dog control or you name it, I mean...
Well, we had one where an individual years ago wanted a sidewalk put in. It was gonna be $2 million bucks. We choked as the FinCom. But he got the necessary number of voters.
Okay, right.
They petitioned the selectmen, and an article, an item, went on the warrant to discuss $2 million for a sidewalk.
Right.
I mean, we were against it, but still, if town meeting had said, "Go."
Right.
Then, you know, at the end of the day, we have to salute and do what we have to to make it work.
Right.
But there is a deadline. You can't go the night before. And I look at that as respect for the town meeting members. Because realistically, if you snuck one in the night before, "I'm gonna buy a truck for half a million bucks."
Okay.
Uh, wait a minute, the town meeting members weren't able to prepare. FinCom can't tell you where the money's coming from. So it seems reasonable that if you give somebody a month, that...
Right, and plus, remember, you know, the selectmen said, "All right, we're gonna close the warrant on a certain date. All right, we have all the articles." So then, they have to put them in proper form, they have to publish it. That's why, you know, Amy reads the beginning, and we, we skip through all the articles, but the warrant was posted and the police chief, you know, attests to the fact that it was done, so that there's no last-minute, you know...
Sneakies.
Sneaky. I mean, they might try to, you know, and then comes into play is whether it's beyond the scope, whether, "All right, the, the motion's in there, but can I go a little bit beyond that, whether it be a zoning matter or..."
But that's up to you.
Right.
You're, you're the one, Tom is signing that this was duly processed.
Posted, so that people know, they can go to the post office and you'll see the, you know, the notice there, all right?
On the website.
On the website now, too.
But then they rely on you to make sure that, "I'm staying within."
Right, if, on, on amendments to the motion, remember, the, you know, and people always talk about an article, all right? The article is the warrant, is in the warrant, but then someone presents a motion under the article, all right? And that's what you're talking about, the motion. "I moved at the town." The article says, "To see if the town..." The person gets up there and says, "I moved at the town." So that's the motion we're talking about.
I'm asking town meeting now to take an action.
Right, and then amendments are allowable, you know, we have a, we saw that with the, with the most recent, with the marijuana issue there, as far as the amendment. And I was happy to see that, because, you know, I was very concerned about that. I probably had more calls on, on this past special than, you know, previous town meetings. And I was, I'm glad that the parties got together, you know, and were able to...
But Michael, that's Milford.
That's, right.
You had a group that was very passionate about not having pot stores.
Right.
And I really believe if the article had just said, "Do you want to allow pot stores in Milford?", that people would've understood it.
Right.
But then somehow, the testing and the cultivation and...
Right, and plus the ongoing business that was here and...
And, see, that to me was the part where we say, "I've never seen town meeting turn against our own." Is town meeting understood that, wait a minute, you're messing with two businesses?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when they said, "Well, they weren't really active," the CEOs, and I talked, I mean, I got up and said, old-fashioned Milford way, I don't go through all this. I went to the CEO and said, "Will you ever sell marijuana in Milford?" And they said, "No, we give you our word." And then Chris Haudella said, "Plus, it's against the law. So whether I want to or not, I'm telling you, I won't."
Yeah.
But it's against the law.
Right, right.
To me, town meeting pivoting, you know, and to Donna's credit, the most passionate anti-artikel there was, she got up and said, "Wait a minute, this is fair. We can have what we really want and not hurt Milford businesses."
Mm-hmm.
You know, my hat was off to her, 'cause that was a huge pivot on her part.
Yeah.
And it couldn't have been easy.
Right, right.
But that's Milford.
Right, you know, as I said, we've just, you know, I'm glad that I spent my 50 years of politics in, in Milford and, you know, we've, as I said, we've gone through our ups and downs, but...
So now, we know how to put in article, any citizen can get a group of people, either 10 or whatever number, at the annual town meeting, petition the selectmen, and they're usually pretty reasonable about including it.
Well, they have to include it.
Ah, well, that makes it...
I mean, you know, mandatory, I mean, you know, it's mandatory that they have to, if you've got the, you've got the number of signatures, you, and this is the, you know, oftentimes, and I know Jerry's, Jerry Moody's help, helpful as far as, you know, helping them, you know, put it in the proper form, okay? I mean...
But they have to include it.
Right, they have to include it. They can't, they can't just ignore it, I mean, you know...
No wonder they seem so reasonable that they always include it.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So then it goes in front of town meeting, you get your shot.
Don't forget the, you know, in the planning board, and again, one of the things I, you know, checked out as far as this, this last amendment to the, to the zoning bylaw, that had to go to the planning board, the planning board has to have a hearing on zoning articles. So if, if the planning board didn't have a, a hearing on that, then we couldn't consider it.
So you would consider that out of order.
Oh, absolutely, yes. So that was one of the things, you know, and they, they just make a recommendation now, you know, they, you know, that's...
So like, a lot of times, you say, "We're gonna accept ABC Street."
Right.
You have to make sure that all the right agencies or departments in town have done their due diligence.
Right.
And present. 'Cause I know poor Pat Cannelli, "Having a duly authorized..." It's like, "Okay, Pat, we've heard that, we believe you."
Yeah.
But that's part of the process.
Right, yes, right.
And then you go through, and town meeting decides yea or nay.
Right.
Now, over the years, I mean, I just saw, and to your credit, you shut me down, because I just saw a really historic event where we voted to limit how long people could talk.
Right.
And I'll admit, I sent you an email saying, "Can I really limit it?" And you said, "I'd rather not have you totally limit it until we try."
Right.
And you were right.
Right.
But we used to have people get up for 40, 45 minutes.
I've mentioned to previous boards of selectmen, I mentioned to this committee that was studying, "All you have to do is present a motion, all right?" And for some reason, people were, the arguments that I heard through the grapevine were, "We don't wanna cut anybody off." All right? That was, that was the feedback I got. I mean, I just, but, you know, as you said, a certain amount of time, you get your point across, after, after that time, you're just, you know...
There's 25 to 40 articles. If each of them took 40 minutes, and the killer to me is, we've spent the better part of nine months beating up $100 million expenditure, called the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Bink!
Oh, yeah.
Bink!
Years ago, though, there was a lot of items pulled. I mean, no, no question about it, years past. And again, to the credit of the Finance Committee, that, you know, you've studied it and people just, you know, yes, all right, we just rubber stamp it, all right?
And we post it, so that if somebody, I think in the old days, if you had a question, unless you were an extrovert and would go ask, you know, Mr. Nofree, "Why?", you had to ask for it. So it would be pulled, discussed. Now, I really believe town meeting members, but even residents, it's their money.
Right.
You know, we're spending their money. You know, I joke and say, "If I want my coffee, I'll go spend my $2.50, 'cause I earned it, it's my money, I can do what I want."
Right.
When I'm spending town residents' money, I gotta be three times more careful. So posting it gives people a lot more information, and they got a month to digest it.
Right, right.
So I guess the problem, I had no issue with saying, "You got 10 minutes to make your point." And then somebody else has to talk.
Right.
I always feel...
Just, you know, in years past, it was always the policy, I think even going back as far as when I was on the selectmen, we would never move the previous question. Because the selectmen would, you know, we'd always take the position that by moving the previous question, we're cutting off an opportunity for someone else to speak. So that was, and I think there are still some members, some older members of the town meeting, when, you know, they will vote, not that they, you know, just the fact that if someone wanted to, wasn't recognized, and I get that, you know, interesting, I moved the precincts around this last, this last meeting.
Well, that's nice, 'cause you rotate the precincts, so we're not always...
Right.
Precinct 8, we're always in Hope Dale.
Right, right. But someone says, "Why, why are the members at large up front?" That was, that was one of the, "Why not move them to another, another area?" And then the other problem was that when people came in late, you know, "Oh, precinct 3 is on the left, back left," so they go over there, "Wait a minute, this isn't my precinct, and I, I wanna, I wanna vote, you know, so where's my precinct now?" So a little, little confusion there. But I think, you know, I, I think we'll hopefully continue that, you know, and just to give people, that we're in the back all the time, move them up front and give them an opportunity to be recognized. And again, I try to, I try to recognize, you know, as you get older, the hearing and the, and again, this is a, a good distance back there when, you know, to trying to see who's trying to be recognized. So I try to give everyone an opportunity to, I tell them, because I don't know whether, you know, you're scratching your head or raising your hand or whatever, "Stand up, yell at me."
No, but you've been pretty clear, if I yell, "Mr. Moderator."
Right.
I usually get your attention.
Right, right.
If I sit there and say, "Oh, yeah, it would be, it'd be nice."
Right.
Okay, I'm one of 240-yard people, kinda hard to pick me out of the crowd.
Right.
But it seems like limiting somebody to 10-minute shots has worked.
It has. I think I've gotten more positive feedback on, on that, and we, as I said, we talked about that, you know, and Dr. Hallard mentioned, you know, "Can I, can I do it?" And I says, "Give it a try." And, you know, I had to make sure that it's not debatable, all right? That is, if you, motion that we limit each speaker to 10 minutes, someone could amend it to say five minutes. And then we just talk about, "Do you want five minutes or do you want 10 minutes?" "How old in favor of the amendment?", you know, so...
But it seemed like a good thing to, let's start at 10, 'cause it kills the half-hour or 45-minute diatribes. And it's working.
Yeah, and I, I keep track. I try, that's what I'm writing there, who's speaking. I try to, if I know ahead of time whether a person is for or against, I'll try to, you know, go back and forth. I mean, it's, you know, I'm not always successful on that, but I just, I do give it a try.
Now, when you say you're gonna do this, people will pull out Robert's Rules amended.
Right.
And say, "Wait a minute, every once in a while, you don't follow Robert's rules."
Right.
And there's a reason for that, isn't there?
Well, the reason being that, you know, we formed the representative town meeting back in 1935. Interestingly, and I, Jerry's gonna, Jerry Moody's probably gonna kick me for saying this, but if you look at the statute setting that up, there's a provision, you know, we have five days for the Attorney General to approve any bylaw. There's a provision in that setting up that any expenditure, and any expenditure of more than $20,000 or a change in the bylaw is subject to a petition. 10% of the registered voters within five days can get a petition signed and force the selectmen to have a vote on that particular amendment or that expenditure of more than $20,000. That was done one time. In fact, it was done back in, I wanna say, 1969, when I got on the Board of Selectmen, I advocated changing the selectmen term, instead of electing three selectmen for one year, have one selectman for a three-year term. And that was my proposal, that was my motion to, to do that. And a very intelligent guy, went to St. Mary's, graduated a couple of years after, John Dalton, he was against that. So it passed town meeting, he got the petition, we had a vote, and then you have to get 25% of the people to vote, in order to make it effective. So there's, you know, that could've been done with the water company, that could've been done with the zoning...
But I guess my point is, this is not Michael Nofree's preference book.
Right.
You're, you're not following Robert's Rules of Order.
No, we have Town Meeting Time, that's the Bible of moderators throughout the state. It's available at the library, three, three moderators put the book together, it's about, you know, 150 pages of all different motions. And then what I also use is John Curran, back in 1953, you go back to the Milford Daily News edition, he had a huge article on how we consider certain motions, whether it be reconsideration, laying on the table, you know, and we have those things that are peculiar. So we've been working with those since 1953, which is what, 47, 70, almost 70, 65, 70 years. So that's what I, I have a copy of that in the...
But that was news to me, 'cause when I first came back to Milford, and I was a parliamentarian at Maryland Yacht.
Okay.
And you did, I said, "Wait a minute, no!"
Yeah.
And then, when I asked you, you said, "Well, wait a minute, no, 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 you're going by Robert's Rules."
Right.
We go by the town meeting...
Town Meeting Time, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the Bible of moderators, plus I rely on our traditions.
Sure.
And we have certain, you know, certain bylaws affecting town meeting in, in Milford, all right? So that, you know, our reconsideration, first time it's majority, second time it's two-thirds, and then it's after every other article has been considered that you can reconsider.
And it's always a riot, because I'll hear you say, "If I hear nobody against..."
Right, yeah.
"I don't have to count two-thirds." But then you get the one voice in the back that says, "No!"
Yeah.
Okay, it's not unanimous.
Right, right.
We know it's 239 to 1, but stand on up.
Yeah. And then there are other interesting issues. You can move for a secret ballot.
Really?
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, right, but, you know, people thought there used to be seven voters rising to demand a secret ballot. And what you have to do then, legislature changed that, it's gotta be two-thirds of a representative town meeting then have to vote to have a secret ballot. You can also have a polling by members, all right? Mr. Smith, Mr. Jones, stand up, how do you wanna vote? So we'd have the registered voter, the vote of each, each elected town meeting member. That also, another issue that has bothered me as far as, not bothered me, but I think it's worth discussing, if you're a representative town meeting member, do you represent those people in the precinct? Or do you say, "Wait a minute, I put my name on the ballot, I ran, I, I had the, maybe I would've only gotten 50 votes, and I risked that because I wanted to be a town meeting member, so I'm gonna vote the way I feel is in the best interest of the town of Milford, as opposed to the 20 people that called me and said, 'Nofree, you should vote yea or nay.'"
And Michael, I have a problem, because although I think people elect me for whatever reason they believe...
Mm-hmm.
If I know that 70% of the people in precinct, I don't, sorry, I don't care about precinct 1 or 2, or, when I'm at town meeting...
Yeah.
I am going precinct 5. That's who I'm supposed to represent. If I know that 70% of those people...
How do you know that 70% of those people are, are for or against that?
Well, we just had a referendum.
Huh?
We just had a referendum.
Okay, all right, that's one issue. But I'm just saying, some other issue that isn't as well-publicized as that, do you wait, and, and how many calls do you get? What's, what's interesting now is, with respect to this committee that we formed, we now have online emails and telephone numbers of town meeting members on our website. So you can, before you had to try to, well, you can't find a phone book anymore, anyway. So, I mean, that's another issue, but, you know, did you make the effort to, well, I mean, just think, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I, we elected a new police chief and a fire chief. And I did get a lot of calls, and then a lot of town meeting members, you know, you know, called up and wanted to, you know, and especially with zoning issues, I think you're getting a lot of people in your precinct that says, "Wait a minute, I don't want this particular, you know, activity in my zone," all right? So, but I always wondered whether, you know, and that's, that's the democracy argument.
Well, that's the hardest thing, 'cause you're right, because part of me says, "I should represent the majority of people in precinct 5."
Right.
How do I know? 'Cause too many times, it's the vocal minority that you get all the phone calls from.
Right.
I guess you gotta, you know, like, when I'm, when I'm on the FinCom, I feel I'm elected to represent the entire town.
Mm-hmm.
So it may not be the greatest thing for precinct 5, but if it's the best for the town. And then we have to be careful, because as a group, we have an unofficial policy that says, "If you're not gonna agree with the FinCom, don't talk from the FinCom table."
Right, which is good, yeah.
I will go back to my precinct 5, sit, and then call Mr. Moderator, 'cause I'm not representing the FinCom.
Mm-hmm.
At that point, I'm representing my view on what's best for my precinct. And that's always hard, because you are caught, 'cause people have said, "Really? When people see you leave the table, you don't think they know?"
Uh-huh.
I'm like, "Okay, but I still, if I'm supporting what the Fincom voted on, I feel comfortable standing up from the table."
Okay, yeah.
But if I'm not, then I don't feel right.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll retreat back.
Yep. But as I said, I think hopefully with the, you know, access to town meeting members that, because I could, I did get a call the last meeting, and a woman says, you know, "I, I don't feel that the town meeting members are gonna vote the way I want them to vote." And I says, "Well, have you called the town meeting members and, you know, expressed your..." She says, "I've called, I've called them in my precinct." I says, "Well, you as a registered voter can come down and speak, you know, far or against, you know, you're welcome to do that." And she didn't show up that night, but she was an older person, she says, you know, her group of senior people...
But now, you make it very easy. If I am a registered voter, 'cause I know that when somebody says, "Hey, my name is Joe Smith, precinct 1," Amy starts flipping real quick.
Mm-hmm.
I can watch Amy to look at you and say, "Yep, that's verified." But if I'm not a registered voter, and nobody objects, you allow, like, we could have a department head that lives in Hope Dale...
Right.
Come and speak to town meeting if everybody says it's okay.
If there's no objection, right, if there's no objection, but you must be a registered voter in the town of Milford, and otherwise, it's unanimous consent. And the, the example I always think of is when we had that issue with EMC, and Mr. Egan, you know, he called me, and, gee, Mike, you know, "We'd like to be able to speak." I says, "Well, this is the rule we have, and I'll give you 5 minutes," I says, you know, if they, you know, when we recessed the meeting, he was allowed to speak, and I got a nice thank you note from him that, you know, and here's a guy, you know, and he just, you know, it was, you know, it was, we talked, and, you know, at least the town meeting wanted to hear him, you know, and there was, you know, other issues as far as...
Well, I think the whole town meeting, when the CEO of Proverity got up and talked to us, he said he's a Milford boy, moved back to Milford, I mean, he talked Milford, and I think a lot of people swayed to say, "Yeah, this is not a three-headed demon and somebody coming from..." Let's face it, if it's out of town, you're already suspect.
Right.
I mean, I always laugh, because I told my daughter, she's now truly a Milfordian, 'cause she's third-generation Milford, and she lives within 2 miles of her mother.
Okay.
So now you're true.
Right.
But, you know, you start thinking about it, and everybody has a chance to talk.
Right.
If you're a registered voter, that means we're taking your money, then you should have a chance to talk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, 40 years, if you had to pick one of the most exciting town meetings...
Well, that's, uh, well, as I said, I mean, I, I go to the, I think there are more characters that, that I, that I've seen through the years, where there was people that would get up there, and they were just talking, nobody understood a word they were saying, I mean, but, you know, they had to get up there and they, they talked, I mean, the, well, I'll tell you, one of the, and I look at the, the things we've done, just think of the, I used to bring my, my refuse down to the town dump, okay? And then now, what am I doing on Saturday mornings? I'm going to soccer games down there with my, watching my grandchildren, and that was a unanimous vote, okay? A unanimous vote to appropriate that money, and that's going back a few years now that we've, we've had that. It's nice to see that with, whether, and I think the high school, you know, which was X years ago, I think, what, 1972?
'72.
'72, all right.
'Cause we moved in, I was the first...
28 and 17, all right.
I was the first class out in '74.
Okay, all right, so that was, you know, that was a unanimous vote.
Well, see, that's been the, the thing that has really impressed me over the years. You know, for a long time, people were saying, "Why are you building up stabilization?", and I kept saying, "There's a school coming."
Mm-hmm.
And town meeting allowed us, 'cause we couldn't put a dollar away without asking them.
Right.
And they allowed the town to keep tucking money away, so that when Woodland came, I remember, the only thing I got up and said was, "For 11 years, we've been saying, 'There's a school coming, school's here, we're covered.'"
Mm-hmm.
No, no profanity, no 2 and 1/2 override language, no dead exclusion.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's the great thing, I mean, because you go to these meetings, moderators' meetings or whatever, and they talk about overrides, and they, it's, you know, and how well, you know...
Everybody laughs when I say, "We don't allow profanity."
Yeah.
Those are the two most profane words I can think of, is 2 and 1/2 override or dead exclusion.
Yeah.
And, you know, we started this year when people said, "You're putting money away again?", I said, "There's a school coming." They said, "What school?", I said, "About eight, nine years, we're gonna have to redo the high school."
Yeah, yeah, that's next to...
And if we start tucking money away now, I only hope that who's ever voting, I don't know if I'll be around, but we'll have the same option to say, "We can cover it in normal budget, we don't have to go for using profanity in that hall."
Right, right.
So characters are the ones that...
Oh, yes, I mean, you know, whether it's, you know, they're passing, they're passing... Reno Bachi was a, a guy that, his comment on the town meeting floor, you know, it was a matter of public record back then, "I know how to take care of, if you have a dog problem in your, in your neighborhood, you know, just put a little poison..."
Poison in the food!
"...in that'll take care of the..."
Or one of the town meeting members that got up and said, "We're not doing enough to cultivate business, talk about an oxymoron, a bookstore in Bellingham." I remember just, "Did we just insult an entire town?"
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and you sit there like, "They didn't mean that."
And I think through the years, I mean, when I first, it probably went, you know, they weren't recorded initially, probably, I was very, tried to keep everybody on point here, and I, I think I've relaxed my, maybe, hopefully not too far from the point, but I, you know, I tried to keep everybody, and I suppose people said to me...
If they watch you...
They watch, they know when I'm ready to...
The minute your hand starts wiggling...
Yeah.
It's like, "Okay," I mean, we're sitting there at the Fincom table, thinking, "Okay, he's reaching his Nofree limit."
Yeah.
You know, you can see the hand...
Right, right.
And the gavel, and then all of a sudden, "Kablam, okay, you're over the limit."
Right, but there have been, you know, Georgie Cale was another one that, you know, used to like to get up on the town meeting and speak, and, again, we've been, you know, through the years, we've been, had good representation, and in fact, I, you know, I look back at even the finance committee, I did a little checking to find out who were the previous, you know, chairman in addition to you, we've had Joe D'Antonio, we've had, you know, Lenny Lynch, Maschili, you know, these guys that were, you know, good presentations, and, you know, it's been, you know, it's, you know, it's been a pleasure serving as the...
People ask, at the end of the night, before Joe D'Antonio says, "Move to adjourn," 'cause that seems to be his thing.
Right.
They say, "We want to dissolve the warrant."
Dissolve the warrant, right. Well, that's, that's it, that's, that's the final step, you dissolve the warrant, so then you get the 5 days, you know, for, for, to be effective, once it's submitted to the Attorney General's office, any bylaw that we've, we've passed at that, at that meeting, or we have to dissolve the warrant...
Well, I mean, people never knew what it meant, dissolving the warrant.
Right.
We've already voted on everything.
And the other thing we've had, we never used to take attendance, all right? I mean, this was relative, when I say relatively, you know, probably within the last 20, 20-plus years, but, and people always said, "Well, how do I know, you know, whether they showed up?" And some, you know, what bothered me too was the resolutions when people pass away, and some people, you know, before the attendance, or even after that, they would never show up, but they'd always run for town meeting because of their name, they'd get reelected, and they always wanted that little resolution that's always gonna be, you know, someone 100 years from now can look back and say, "Oh, there was a resolution for..."
See, Michael, to me, that is something that the town residents have the right to know. If I voted for you, now, it's 2 nights.
Yeah, 2 nights, especially.
2 nights a year.
But if you go back to the 11 that I told you we had one year, I mean, that might be a little tacky. And now, even, you know what some towns do as far as, and some people leave early because they have babysitters, all right? And babysitters aren't inexpensive nowadays, so in other towns, what they've done is, whether it's the National Honor Society, whatever, they have like a, a room off to the side